Okay, we're gonna go ahead now and get started with the council debate or slash question portion of this meeting. And we'll start here with Mike and go down, so we'll go Mike, Shane, Kevin, and Brett, and give them each two minutes to give opening remarks of whatever they'd like to say.
All right, well, thank you, and I'd like to thank the chamber for having this. It's, uh, well, no, I don't, I don't want to be here, actually. Remember Stacy Beck told me, it's really not that bad, other than the meet the candidates nights. This is like two or three, it feels like, but, no, really, thank you. I'm Mike Clayson, running for city council. Um, I married my wife Angie Danzy, we're both from Spanish Fork, grew up here. My, my parents were Snick and Olive Clayson. I say Ralph, but those that know him would call him Snick, instead of Ralph. Um, and I work at the credit union on Third South. Um, and really, the reason I'm loving is just the, the love of the city. Um, it's done a lot for me, my family grave is a great place to, to bring our kids up and for us to grow up. Um, and I just hope to help and serve. Um, I've spent some time on Fiesta Days committees. Uh, most recently, I helped with the pyromusical and just love of service, love of the city, and, and what it stands for, and, and what it is.
Thank you.
My name is Shane Marshall, I'm running for city council. Um, longtime resident of Spanish Fork, my parents moved here almost forty-five years ago. Unlike the previous, the mayor candidates, I will be the oldest one on the panel tonight, so that's, that's awesome. Um, but, grew up in Spanish Fork, uh, married my high school sweetheart from here, we had three beautiful kids, three daughters, um, two of which are gonna graduate college this year, super proud of them, hoping that we can make a community that they want to come back to and can afford to live in. So that's probably the number one reason I'm running, I wanted to make sure that they can live in this community that I grew up in. Um, I, like I said, I graduated from Spanish Fork, I went to Utah Valley Community College for a couple of years and played baseball there, um, then transferred up to BYU and, and graduated in civil engineering. I spent twenty-five years at Utah Department of Transportation, learning a bunch of different things, from highway design, um, to maintenance, to really leadership, and I think that is probably the number one quality that I'm gonna bring to the city councils, the ability to lead a group of people and, and lead a community. After the, um, after BYU, uh, like I said, I went to the Utah Department of Transportation, and, um, the, the last few years, I was the executive deputy director in charge of the day-to-day operations for the department, sixteen hundred employees, 1.2 billion dollars of your taxpayer dollars. Um, and I really learned the responsibility and accountability you had to have when you have that kind of money, and, and it's not yours, right? It's, it's the taxpayers, you need to be accountable and responsible for it. I think that background is gonna lend itself really well to the city council. Back in June, um, this June, Keir Scobes left the council, and I was fortunate enough to be appointed by, by the city council. Um, so I've served in the last, in this capacity for the last few months, and completely enjoyed the entire time, it's been a great experience. And I think the one thing that I learned about being a city council member is that you need to be a leader, Mike mentioned this earlier, um, but it really is about leadership, it's about bringing people together and, and making good informed decisions.
My name's Kevin Euler, running for city council. I was born and raised, again, here in Spanish Fork, I grew up in the Mitchell subdivision on the west end of town. My parents are Dave and Susan Euler, my grandparents, Richard and Margie Banks. Um, a little bit of my background, I went to school, got my degree in information systems, I work currently at New Skin and Provo as a data analyst, I crunch numbers and, and analyze data all day long. Um, as far as service opportunities, in the past, I've had the opportunity to be scout master, which I loved, loved working with boys and taking them into mountains and teaching them what hard work and difficult situations are really like. Um, getting them away from technology and electronics is, is a great thing. Uh, like, four and a half years ago, I got a call from Mayor Laufson, he asked if I'd be willing to serve on the city's planning commission, and so that's been a great experience for me, especially with the issue of growth that we've seen in the recent years. It's taught me quite a bit, I've learned a lot, and learned that I, I definitely don't have all the answers. It's great to be a part of a group where you can discuss and, and meet and try and figure things out together, and especially with the community. I'm running mainly because I want Spanish Fork to continue being, for my kids, what it was for me growing up, just a place where you feel at home, where you come in, you've got that rural, open feel. It's, it's a place where you can hopefully go to Macy's and still see people that you know, um, as we continue growing, so, love your support, love your vote, again, I'm Kevin Euler, thank you.
Brett?
Okay, uh, I'm Brett Bills, um, I think I'm the only one up here that wasn't born in Spanish Fork, I was born and raised in American Fork. Um, actually, in between American Fork and Lehigh, it was county at the time, it was a great place to live and grow up. Um, if you drive through there now, there's a Costco in my neighborhood that I grew up in, that was nice farms and fields. Tell people I wasn't born in Spanish Fork, I had the good sense to, to find one of your best and marry her, and she has made sure that this is where we live, and I'm proud of her for that. Uh, we have five daughters that have been a, a part of this community, we're raising them here. Proud Dance troupe, state champion La Chalita, very proud of her and, and them. Um, one of the reasons I'm running for city council, we get asked that, why are you running? Um, you know, I wanna be involved, and I have been involved, I've been involved in discussions in town for the last six years, I've been a resident for twenty. Um, I was kind of asleep for the first fourteen years that I was here, things happened, and I didn't, I honestly didn't know, I went to work, I raised my kids. Uh, it, it was about six years ago that I realized that the city council and the city can make decisions that actually affect our lives a lot. Local government is in charge of our services, they're in charge of, of how our city grows, um, and where our tax dollars are spent. And they can make a decision that, that we don't notice, and it's great, and, and they don't get a lot of credit for that, or they can make a decision that really affects us, our pocketbook, uh, it affects, um, decisions in our home to decide what we can afford and what we can pay for. And, and as I've been a part of those conversations over the last six years, um, I've realized that most of the time when the citizens are invited to, to show up, or at least when they finally realize that something is a big enough deal that they should show up, it's a little too late. The council has made decisions, they've already decided what needs to happen. And so, I wanna be part of the solutions that help this community continue to grow, and grow in a good and a safe way, and, uh, hopefully farm kids don't have Costco sitting on their, their property, but if they do, we'll make sure it's the right thing. I'm Brett Bills, and I'm running for city council.
Thank you. Uh, I, I just wanna thank Shane for pointing out that I'm not the oldest one on the panel.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna start out with a little bit of a, a hard, some of these were the same as the mayoral candidates, so if you're listening, that was good, if you weren't, oh, well. But we're gonna start out, yeah, I'm gonna ask a question, we're gonna start with Shane, though, and go down to my left, and then come back and finish with Mike. Um, but I'm gonna start with the question, uh, goes as follows, it's a little bit cumbersome, but pay attention. Too often, we all hear from candidates that they are running for office because they love Spanish Fork, or because they lived here all their lives. Well, this is great, I have two related questions. What is your vision for the future of Spanish Fork, and what do you hope see change during your service on the city council?
You first?
You first.
Excellent, I have two visions for Spanish Fork, and both of the reasons I'm running, one, the first of it is, like I said in my opening, I need, we need to find a room for my kids to live here, not just my kids, but everyone's kids, they, we need to be able to live here, afford to live here, and want to be here. And the way, so we have been planning very successfully for the last ten years, and it's time to make a, a, a new plan to grow in, in Spanish Fork, we can't live on a ten-year-old plan, and so, the number one thing that I wanna accomplish as part of the city council is a new general plan that accommodates a variety of housing choices throughout the community, that brings in the diversity that we need as a community, that keeps us vibrant as a community. The second thing that I, that I wanna make sure we do before I leave the, the city council is change what Main Street is. Um, we've put a lot of effort and, and, um, focus on the north end of our city right now, and I think it's time to focus on Main Street and bring it back to the Main Street that I grew up with.
That yellow card is just mean.
So, Kevin, go ahead. So, my vision for the future of Spanish Fork is that as we continue to grow, that our traditions don't go away, and that we actually include and bring in more traditions. Spanish Fork is known for Fiesta Days, it's known for, you know, activities we do in the fall that just bring people downtown, and so I'd like to see excuses and reasons that get people out of their homes, get us mingling together, and bring us downtown, so we can support our local business downtown. As far as what I'd like to see and hope would change, as, as I've served over the last four and a half years, it's been a disappointment to me when we have an issue that's very important to our entire community, and we only have maybe one or two people in the room, uh, as far as residents to speak to that issue. I'd like to see more community involvement, more interaction, more communication with residents, I'm not sure exactly how we do that, but I wanna see more people showing up at meetings, voicing their concerns, and being a part of, of the answer and solutions.
Brett?
So, I'll try to remember the questions as you ask them.
Can you repeat them?
Please.
Okay, the questions specifically were, what do you hope to see change during your time on the city council, and before that was, what is your vision of the future of Spanish Fork, and what you want to see change while you're on the council?
So honestly, as, as horrible as it might sound, I want as little as possible to change in town. I love it here, uh, I wasn't born here, I do love it here. Um, I, I moved here for a reason, and I love raising my family here, um, so, so I want as little to change as possible, um, while we maintain the greatness that frankly, Spanish Fork is. Uh, when I was young, all I knew about Spanish Fork was that you guys had a great Main Street, big trucks, big tires, and pretty girls, like, that's all I knew about Spanish Fork. Uh, Spanish Fork has grown up a lot since then, it is a great place to be and a great place to live, and I would like to see as little change as possible. Now, change is inevitable, and so, the city council, really, they kinda have their hands around a bowl trying to, to steer it and guide it. Uh, as we interact with citizens and this opportunity to talk with people, a lot of people are mad about things that the, the city council doesn't have control over, but they can guide and direct. And so, I, I think that a, a prudent guidance of the change as it comes is really what we're after.
Okay, uh, Mike, I almost said Steve.
All right, I'll, I'll touch base on the first part of the question. I was born here, I was raised here, I love the city, that's why I wanna serve, I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. Um, I know that's an easy answer, and we give that answer a lot, even Brett didn't live here, that's why he wants to, this is a great town. Um, as far as my vision, more of the same, you can't argue with what Spanish Fork's done and where we're at, safest city in, in Utah. Um, the, the way they, they run the budget, Cantor just retired, Jordan has taken over, we have great people here doing a great job. Um, and, and they're gonna help guide us, and, and maybe, um, give us direction, what they think and what they feel, and, uh, this city is ran really smooth and really good, and has been for a very long time. I, I think there's stuff we could always listen to and adjust, but, but really, this, this city's headed in the right direction, that's why everybody wants to be here.
Okay, thank you. All right, Kevin, we'll start with you on the next question. Uh, this is a little shorter, a little easier, how will you handle disagreement on the council amongst councilmen?
I don't look at disagreement as a problem. Um, arguing is a problem, disagreeing is not, I think it's healthy when you can discuss issues. Um, with, if everybody has the same mindset, comes up with the same ideas, how do you grow, how do you change? And so, so I don't think there's anything wrong with discussing, um, differences and concerns, that's absolutely vital, especially when it comes to decision-making within the city.
Okay, Brett?
Um, yeah, I mean, disagreement is important in any process, uh, previous engagement, we talked about, I talked about my day job. Uh, for half of my career, I've been involved in, uh, quality assurance of projects with, with engineers, they're highly skilled, highly trained, and they're all very opinionated. Um, and in a room full of disagreement is a room that comes out producing the best product, uh, by far. So, disagreements are bound to happen in a room where you've got smart people who are interested in doing great things, and, and frankly, you take those ideas, you work together, and, and then you make the decision that is best for the residents. Um, you know, we all come prepackaged with our own ideas of what should happen and what should be done, we have our history in town, but, the city council's job is really to look at what the residents want and what's best for the residents, and then make that decision. So, I welcome disagreement, I mean, uh, friction on a council is a good thing, if everyone in the room agrees, we've got a problem. Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
All right, I, I didn't mention, but we have five kids, a lot of kids, we have four boys, and they all play sports, and especially baseball, and I've coached a lot of baseball, and I always talk to the umpires, after five kids, you get to know them all, and I know them pretty good, and I always, I always like to tell them, hey, listen, you do your best, I'll do my best, we are never gonna agree on every call. If we do, one of us is doing something wrong, right? Um, there will be conflict, um, there, there will be difference of opinions, ultimately, what we're running for is the people. Um, I've said this before, said again, I want my kids to have a pool, but not at a tax increase. If there's a way to get it done, I would love it, but, um, if the people do not want a tax increase, I, I'm not voting for it, bottom line.
Okay, thank you. Shane?
So I think the best way that we can handle disagreement is very open and transparent, I think that it's good for the citizens to see the city council having a discussion about whatever issue it is. I don't think it's necessarily wrong that we agree on things, but I think that an open, transparent conversation about how we made that decision is the most important thing. Now, I may make the same, I may approve something before, because of different reason than someone else, but that doesn't mean that it's wrong that we approved it together. I think that as long as you can see, the public can see us having the conversation, whether it's in controversy or whether it's in agreement, that's the most effective way of, of handling the disagreement.
Okay, thank you. This one, we will start with Brett on this question. Um, so, it is estimated that Utah County will grow by one million people by the year 2065, a mere forty-five years from now, eighty percent of which will come from internal growth. If Spanish Fork simply accommodates the percent, the percentage of growth that is our share of the current population of Utah County, Spanish Fork will be more than a hundred and eight thousand residents at that time. So, the question is, what is your vision to help Spanish Fork maintain its quality of life and small-town feel that so many treasure, while understanding that our children and grandchildren need a, a great place to live?
So, I think that's a great question, I mean, growth is coming and it's going to happen, uh, it's our job to make sure that it happens in a clean, safe, and, and controlled way. Um, I think the, the real question there is, how are you gonna maintain that small-town feel? Um, I, frankly, I think that our city, from the manager down, and our council right now, has done an amazing job at that, and they've given us an example for that. Uh, we, we keep the events happening, uh, we keep, we keep Fiesta Days being a, a destination that happens on a, on a local holiday, I mean, we are the place to come on the twenty-fourth, because we have great holidays. Harvest Moon Hurrah, I had never heard of, until I came to Spanish Fork, I think it's amazing. Um, I, I think that we keep the, the center areas of town open, the way that they are, I think that, that we continue to utilize the sports park the way that we have, as a gathering place, uh, Mike mentioned, he's been over the pyrotechnic, uh, thing, that's fairly new, I think four or five years, it's great. Um, but, but the events and the invitation to make people be, to let people know they're involved and can be involved are really what's going to keep our town, uh, feel the way that it is.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna, we've had some questions that were kinda individual for each of you. What? Oh. You started with Brett, we're gonna have each of us answer that? Yeah, that's right, sorry.
The most important question of the night.
Go ahead. Mike?
That's why I'm the oldest guy on the floor.
Um, and, that is a good question, and that's, obviously, we're all running, we know this, this is what we get asked the most. At first, it was the pool, now it's cooled down, now the pool's cooled down, I guess, I don't know. Um, we're all gonna have to work together on this, there, there is a master plan, um, and Shane's brought it up, we, we need to look, and we need to figure out where it makes sense to do the things we do to accommodate. Look, we would all love to say, hey, I want room for my kids, but not yours, that's not the way it works, we, we've gotta do this, I do want my kids to live here, they wanna be here. Um, right now, my son can't afford to be here, right, right now, he, he'll figure it out, we'll get it fixed, um, but you, uh, you've gotta work together, open dialogue, um, and Shane said, is, is we need to make a plan, we need to work together and come up with a plan of, of how it'll all work.
So I think, I mentioned it before, is that the number one thing is we need to have a plan, a strategic plan, that we bring the community members in, and we figure out where the best place to put the diversity throughout our community is. On top of that, we need to encourage UTA and others to bring transit into our community, we need to have land use planning in such a way that encourages transit, so that we can maintain that small-town feel. If we just fill up our Main Street, US Six, other roads with cars, we will lose that ma, that small-town feel that we've all grown and to love. So, I think smart land use planning on the west side of I-15 is the key to our future, um, there's a lot of opportunity to put people out there, and give them access to transit that doesn't impact the rest of our community. I think, secondly, how do we maintain that feel, I think some of us have touched on it before, I think primarily, it's we invest into ourselves, so oftentimes, we hear this idea that the city is spending money on X, that's our money, that we're spending money on ourselves, and we need to make sure we do that right, and give our community members places to gather and recreate and become part of the community.
Okay, Kevin?
My turn. Uh, as was touched on, I think traditions, traditions we have in our community are one way to keep a small-town feel, one thing that wasn't talked about is preserving open space. Uh, and that involves planning, you have to plan, it's much cheaper to buy agriculture area when it's thirty thousand an acre, 'cause there's no development around it, than to wait for the development to come, and then try and purchase that property at a hundred thousand or more an acre, and so you need to plan, where do we need our open space, where do we want it, let's try and get that land while it's cheap. Another thing that we need to discuss and talk about is the preservation of the river bottoms, I think everybody looks at the river bottoms in Spanish Fork as, as a special place, and it is for me. I've got a lot of great memories, um, driving River Bottoms Road, and so I think we need to continue looking at, how do we preserve river bottoms, how do we talk with the property owners down there to try and make that happen?
Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll go to an individual question, I have one for each of you, so we'll just go down this way, starting with Mike. Uh, we can still go, right? Okay. Okay. Okay, Mike. How do you plan to clean up the city, uh, get people to mow their grass, stop their dogs from barking, parking multiple cars at their residence, some people that run their parked cars up on their lawn without licenses, some not, some park cars on the curb that haven't moved for months, sometimes years. Existing council members and mayors have not done a good job of this, what would your plan be?
Okay, um, I think I got this email a couple of times. Um, it, it's not our job, bottom line, it's their property. Now, if they're breaking the law, we have the greatest police department in the nation, they'll be on it, um, but I, I think, hopefully, self-pride, um, pride of city, um, could help. Um, hey, I'm willing to go help somebody mow their lawn if it'll help. We didn't get the lawn mowing question, and I mow my lawn because, number one, the lines have to be straight, right? And number two, when you have five kids and a dog, you put your AirPods in and you mow the lawn, nobody gets in your way for like thirty-five minutes, some of the greatest time of the summer. Um, yeah, I, I get what the question is, just realistically, what a city council can do, there's not a lot, we, we, we have ordinances, um, the police do enforce them, I've actually talked to the police department about this, and a lot of the, the current council about this. Um, wish I could help, but there's not much we can do there, but hey, if, if you want my help, I'll go with you and help him mow it.
Thanks. Okay, Shane? You've campaigned heavily on your history as a civil engineer, and your past experience with the Spanish Fork Planning Commission, can you name anything specific that you were instrumental in fixing during your time on the planning commission?
Wow. Be careful what you say, right? Um, I think there's a couple of things, and, and there are some people in this room that may not like it, but I'll explain why I think it's important. So when I was on the planning commission, we talked a lot about the width of our roadways, um, and we narrowed them, and for some, you're like, why would you narrow the roadway, it makes it less safe, and I, I have to say that that is not the case. Um, you narrow the road, you slow down the traffic, you slow down the traffic, the, the roads are safer. Now, there are some cases where we have gone a little bit too narrow, and it's difficult to plow, but I will take the difficulty of plowing and having snow in front of my house to have people going unappropriate speed in front of my house, as opposed to, I live on Eleventh East, it's sixty feet wide, no one goes twenty-five on that road, nobody does. So I think that's one of the things that, while I was on the planning commission, we were able to, to do, is to narrow the roads, slow down, um, traffic within the neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, you were a very vocal supporter of the new life center, or rec center, and the associated tax increase. You were on the team in favor of putting that project into place, how do you reconcile this with your current platform of public safety and fiscal conservate, conservatism first?
Uh, yeah, six years ago, I was absolutely a voice for the life center, the rec center, and I won't back down from that, I absolutely believe that when it comes to a general obligation bond, citizens should be the ones that should get to vote on that, shouldn't be the city council, and so that was my, that was my push and stance on that. As far as the, the cost of it, I think it's hindsight, I, I would be willing to bet that if we were to try and build that same facility at this point, it would cost us millions and millions of dollars more. We can look at the library, just in, as an example, if we had built the library portion of it six years ago, um, as compared to what it's costing us now, we would've saved millions and millions of dollars. We are now a community without a pool. Do I have the answer on the pool? No, that's gonna be up to the citizens to decide, but the cost of a pool, now or in the future, is gonna be a lot more than what it could've been six years ago.
Thank you. Brett, kind of along the same lines, you were a very vocal opponent of the life center or rec center and the associated tax increase, you were on the team that was against that project. If elected, will you stand in the way of a new pool or any rec center proposals?
Uh, so I was very vocal, in fact, I've been very open about that, um, I didn't think that project was right for us, and if you wanna go watch hours of video that SFCM produced, you can see why. Frankly, the only reason I brought that up during my campaign now at all was so that you can go and look at my, my decision-making process, the, the way that I, I look at a problem when it shows up. Um, I, I dig into data, I didn't have an opinion at first, I do fall on the side of, of fiscal conservatism, and I just hate taxes, so that's my natural stance, but, I dug into the project, and I said, I don't think that's right for us. The more pointed question of, will I stand in the way of a pool? No, absolutely not. Um, you won't see me propose a forty million dollar pool. Uh, my involvement in a pool discussion, if I'm on the council, would be, make sure that it's right for the community, if it's right, and what are, are alternative ways to fund one, uh, without raising taxes. Um, I don't find anything, uh, more offensive than, than property taxes, as a citizen, uh, it makes it so that we, as citizens, can't own property. So that was a hot button for me, but no, I wouldn't stand in the way of a pool, I would advocate for the citizens and, and what's best for them, and frankly, we've spent the last five months asking citizens what, what they want.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are now gonna wrap up with two minutes for each future potential council, council member to give their wrap-up speech, so let's start with, uh, start with Kevin, and come this way and go back that way.
Who's it gonna be? Thank you to the chamber for providing us an opportunity to speak, um, get our message out to the citizens, thank you to the citizens that are here tonight. It's, it's been a pleasure, um, over the last six months almost, to be able to run for council, to get to know the, the other candidates that are running, I would hope that every election cycle, we have at least eleven or more people that choose to run, choose to get involved, and choose to be a part of the process, it's been, it's been a great experience. Last night, I had the opportunity with the other candidates to speak to the American Legion, to the veterans, and I shared with them kind of, one of the reasons why I chose to run for city council, and it's, it's because of my grandpa, Richard Banks, who was a World War II vet. Before he died, I had the opportunity to interview him and ask him a lot of questions, and he taught me kind of the core values that he tried to live by, and they're the same that I, I try to use in my own life. First is that God and family come before anything else, that's the most important. Second is you love your country and you respect the flag, and the third is you get involved and you serve in your community, and that's the reason, one of the reasons why I chose to run for city councils, because I feel like civic responsibility, civic service is something each of us should try and do, should be involved in, and try and make our communities better, we lift together. So, thank you again, my name's Kevin Euler, running for city council, and I'd appreciate your vote.
Okay, Shane?
Whoa. I'm prepping. Um, again, thanks to the chamber, thanks Heather, thanks Craig for putting this on and asking the questions, thanks everyone for being here tonight. Um, I ran two years ago and sat in the same spot, and there, I think there were four people in the room, so it's nice to see the people out, asking some really good questions, challenging us on what our points of view are. Um, for me, it comes down to leadership, um, as I, as I reflect on the last six months, and what I would want in a city council member is someone that can lead, um, I think my background lends itself really well for that. Um, so I, I think part of leadership is not necessarily having an answer to everything, right? not expect my leaders to have all the answers. I would expect them to have some. I don't want them to go, I don't know, all the time. I want them to have a solution. It may not be the right one, but I want them to bring something to the table, and I think I bring that to the table. Whether it's traffic issues or land use issues, I think I bring those things to the table to start a conversation around. I want to bring people in the conversation. The issues that we face as a community demand that we bring a lot of voices to the table to make sure we solve them correctly. I'm up for that challenge. I want to be the city council member that brings those folks in, that leads this community for the next four years and into the future. Again, my name is Shane Marshall, I'm running for city council, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Mike?
All right. First off, thanks for having us. Even though I teased it, I don't like it. I still don't like it, but I do like having it. So, I like kind of what Shane said there. We're not gonna have all the answers, nor, I hope we don't, because we have great city employees that are gonna help lead us and guide us. I am running to be the voice of the people. I know that sounds simple, and it sounds cheesy, but really it is. I work in a job where I sit at a desk, and I have people come visit me all day, about random things, about different things. And I believe that I'm a good listener, and I can, I can help. It made me think of the Power musical, which is, if any of you know me, that's my baby. I love that show. And we almost lost it this year. And grateful for a mayor and city council that said, hey, find some money, and we can keep doing it. And then some of the city council, and Emily, and some of the other guys helped us raise $30,000 to keep that going. And not only that, as the show ended, we had texts and phone calls from people out there that wanted to donate for this year. So it's just gonna be bigger, better. And to me, that is Spanish Fork. Sounds cheesy, I said, but it sounds simple, but it is. We're Spanish Fork. We get it done, and we get it done right. And I just, I want to be a part of that. I'm Mike Clayson, running for city council, and I'd love your vote.
Thank you. Brett?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, given a forum to talk to you about our thoughts and how we'll help, frankly. As I mentioned, I wasn't born here, but I'm staying here. I love it here. Everyone makes fun of that, but I do. I'm involved because I get pulled into these questions. I get pulled into projects. And here in Spanish Fork, you can volunteer, you can be appointed by the mayor, or you can get elected. I've been told multiple times, if you've got opinions, get yourself elected. So, we'll find out if there are other people who think the way I do. Basically, I want to advocate for the citizens. I think that the citizens' voice is very important. I think that every dollar, every dime that is spent by the city is ours. It's been taken from us in one way or another, and it should be used for us and for the betterment of our community. Now, I am grateful for a council that has done a great job of that in the past. I'm grateful for, we have great predecessors, frankly, that have set us up, that have planned for the future. Spanish Fork is where we want to be because it's great. I want my kids to be able to live here. I worked with a guy who every time that he heard anything, he would say, oh, man, I hate that, or, oh, man, I love that. He had an opinion right away. That's not who I am. I've been accused of that a few times in interactions because I've had a quick answer. I think I was called a little bit of a bulldog in one interaction because I had an answer. It was an issue I'd been working on for six years. Really, I want to continue studying, planning, and working with the city through issues that are going to affect citizens here into the next 40 years. And I want to be an advocate for them. And I want to be a voice in the room that has put the work in to learn what is best for the citizens and what the citizens want. I really do want more people giving us feedback. My name is Brett Bills, and I'm running for city council.
Okay, we'd like to thank all of these fine candidates for coming out tonight, and for all of you coming out to ask some questions and talk with them. They'll be sticking around for 20 to 30 minutes. If you have any more questions, they'll be kind of out just mingling. It won't be a formal question and a stand-up and answer and be on TV thing, so. I know, it's gonna be hard for Mike to do that, but he's used to talking to people. He said that, so it's all good. So, anyway, again, thanks, and that'll wrap things up.